I'll call the meeting to order. John, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Camaro, would you please take the roll?
Commissioner Monnet?
Here.
Commissioner Pont?
Here.
Vice Chair Knudsen is absent. And Chair Hardy?
Here.
Next item on our agenda is a public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Commission on items of interest that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the Commission may not engage in discussion or take action on matters not described on the agenda. We have a time limit of four minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak on a public forum item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent items. Members of the Commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action, for extended discussion, or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions.
Chair Hardy's staff wishes to pull item 4.2 to allow Ms. Camaro to present that item and to address a question that came from the Commission.
Okay, so that leaves us with 4.1 and 4.3.
I would request we pull 4.3.
Okay, we're down to 4.1. Anyone want to pull that? Well, that saves at least a third of the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of item 4.1, the minutes of July 3, 2018? By consent?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Camaro?
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Moving on to item 4.2, I think I should call for the staff report. Ms. Bianco? This is, I'll describe it. This is a request by Daniel A. Reedy on behalf of 151 Mitchell Avenue Property Group for approval of a resolution granting a sign permit for new signage at the William Tell Building located at 1230 Spring Street, Suite B, in the Central Business District. Oh, it's Ms. Camaro. Excuse me, I'm confused.
Thank you, Chair Hardy. The proposed signage under this item includes one building sign and two identification signs, all located on the primary frontage of the William Tell Building located at 1230 Spring Street, Suite B, in the historic Central Business District. The building sign proposed is approximately 3.7 square feet, consisting of 5.38-inch lettering mounted on the second floor of the building memorializing the historic structure as William Tell Building. On the lower facade, a primary frontage identification sign of approximately nine square feet will consist of 9.38-inch lettering. The raised letters will be constructed of molded plastic prismatic material with either a metallic gold finish, gold leaf, black, or brown copper. It will be stud pad combination mounted for easy removal if necessary. All letters in the sign will be one color, which will complement the overall exterior appearance. In addition, the applicant is proposing one projecting identification sign. The sign would be approximately 3.3 square feet total, double-sided sandblasted wood, with painted gold leaf, black, or brown copper letters. Staff finds the compatibility of the sign to the site is appropriate to fit the small-town character of St. Helena. The appropriateness of the materials and colors do not obscure or detract from the architecture of the historic structure and are complementary with the downtown historic Central Business District. Furthermore, the projecting sign does not obstruct or create hazard with respect to pedestrian traffic, as the minimum clearance proposed meets the zoning regulation. Staff was made aware that the Planning Commission may have some concerns whether the building sign is considered a roof sign. However, Section 17.148.020 excludes building signs that are less than four square feet total from provisions of the sign code. Nevertheless, the applicant, staff spoke with the applicant yesterday, I believe, and the applicant has decided not to continue with the building sign. However, they are able to in the future if they desire to pursue that sign. Therefore, staff finds, staff recommends approval of the proposed project with minor modifications to the resolution that the building sign is no longer proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to address the Commission at this time?
They had a scheduling conflict and no one is able to represent the item here. It was an inadvertent scheduling issue that was beyond their control. They did intend to be at the meeting.
I had a question for staff.
This is the appropriate time?
Okay. I wasn't just totally clear. It sounds like if we approve tonight what your recommendation is, does that mean that in the future there will be, it will be approved, they can have the sign that they are saying they don't want tonight?
So the approval for tonight is only for the projecting sign and the signage that reads Reedy Law Group. It is not for the William Tell Building. But Section 17.148.02 excludes the building signs that are less than four square feet. So if they did want to pursue with that building sign in the future, they can, as is, it's not in the planning, it will not go before Planning Commission.
But it will go to the Planning Department?
These signs are actually specifically excluded from the zoning code provisions.
I was just not clear about that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? I'll open the public hearing then. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioner Pont, do you have any comments?
I have no questions.
I think the signs look great. I totally support what they're asking for.
I have no objections. Is there a motion?
Move the item as amended by the applicant.
Second.
Ms. Camaro, would you?
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
And that brings us to item 4.3, Review and Approval of Planning Commission Bylaws in Light of Recent Changes to the City Council's Standards of Conduct and Rules of Procedure for the Conduct of Council Meetings. Is there a staff report?
The item before the Commission this evening is adoption, a review and adoption of the bylaws as modified in recent discussions with the Planning Commission. They will recall, the Planning Commission and the public will recall that the council made some changes to the protocols for how meetings are run, which triggered a review of the bylaws, upon which time the Commission and staff made some additional recommendations for changes. Those have been incorporated into the proposed bylaws. And I will add to this that Commissioner Pont, in his review, provided direction to, or input to staff identifying that Rule 1, while it talks about that the Commission may choose to elect a chairperson at a different meeting than the standard first meeting in July, it fails to discuss how a vice chair may be reelected should they leave at an unplanned time. And so staff finds it appropriate to, based on that input, add vice chair to Rule 1 in addition to chairperson to allow flexibility in when they would be replaced should they not be able to fulfill their term. Similarly, Rule 29 identifies that the Planning Commission may alter the bylaws by a majority vote, but fails to recognize that they require council approval. And so similarly, Commissioner Pont identified and recommended in order to fully clarify how that process would be undertaken to add, and city council approval after majority vote of the Commission in line 2 of Rule 29.
So I have a question. I have a question. So we're approving the bylaws for the Planning Commission tonight, but these are the bylaws for the City Council.
To clarify, the City Council made some changes to the conduct of all meetings for the boards and commissions and themselves.
Okay.
So staff updated the bylaws to reflect the four-minute timeline for public comment and the change to Rosenberg's rules. However, the point made in Rule 29 is that regardless of the, or the Planning Commission acts to approve their bylaws, but the City Council must also ratify those.
Right.
So should you vote tonight to approve them, they will be taken to City Council for ultimate approval.
But this is for, we're approving our Planning Commission bylaws.
That's correct.
Okay, so Rule number 2.3, is that, it just, this talks about the City Council, but it's the 10-day notification change. So we were going to, one of the things I think we agreed on last time was that we were going to start having notifications, and you said the staff was in agreement, 10 days before. So on page 43 of 213, 2.3 Regular Meeting in January, it talks about 18 business, it talks about the change in that posting. Is that, if we, I mean, is, if we approve tonight the Planning Commission, will that be in there as well?
The bylaws actually do not reference that notification timeline. You're looking at the broader council-adopted protocols for all boards and commissions within the city.
Okay, so that's not an issue, it's a non-issue?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions of staff?
I don't have a question, I just have a short statement. The difficulty was Rule 29 was actually noticed at our last meeting by the chair, right? I will take credit for noticing that the way Rule 1 is written, Dave, who was absent tonight, would have been the indispensable man, but be that as it may, Lester's the one who caught Rule 29 and had some fun with it last time we met too, I think.
Thank you for clarifying. Staff failed to recognize that in the revisions.
Yeah, thank you, John. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move with the changes as brought up.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes.
And that brings us to our first public hearing, which is for item 5.1, Request for Demolition Permit, Design Review, and Use Permit to Demolish and Rebuild an Existing Garage and Construct a New 211-Square-Foot Addition and Decket Property at the Rear of the Property at 1545 Madrona Avenue in the Medium Density Residential Zoning District and Within the Boundaries of the Adams Street Historical District. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Hardy. So as you stated, the application before you is a request for a demolition permit to demolish an existing 672-square-foot garage and a request for design review to construct a new 240-square-foot garage, to add a new 211-square-foot addition to the building rear to accommodate a new master bedroom and construct a rear deck to provide access between the master bedroom and the yard. As part of the landscaping plan, an existing pool would be filled in and new landscaping improvements and plantings would be introduced. A use permit is also being requested in order to authorize reduced side setbacks of the addition that would be consistent with small lot standards. The subject property is a residential lot of about 6,900 square feet and improved with a one-story, single-family residence of 977 square feet with a detached 672-square-foot garage. The residence is a 1930s-era vernacular bungalow that, per historic resource evaluation prepared for the property, is a historic resource and retains a high degree of integrity. The proposed work would meet all applicable development standards in terms of height, lot coverage, and FAR. As detailed in the staff report, the project would exhibit a max height of about 16 and a half, 16 feet and 5 inches, which is within the 25-to-30-foot height limit, an FAR of .176, which is within the max allowable of .340, and then a lot coverage of 22%, which is within the 45% allowed. The residential addition does, however, request to employ the small lot standards in order to allow a reduced seven-foot south-side setback, which would be consistent with the existing non-conforming setbacks of the residence. Per the analysis outlined in the staff report, the project does appear to meet the small lot development standards, given the particulars of the site, and therefore, the project seems to meet all applicable general plan policies, development standards prescribed for the medium-density residential zone and for small lots. As detailed in the staff report, the proposed work is consistent with demolition permit findings, the design review findings, and the use permit findings. The proposed modifications would be appropriate, given the historic character of the home, as modifications are confined to the property rear, such that they would not be particularly visible, and would be appropriately differentiated with the use of quality materials such as horizontal wood siding that would contrast with the stucco cladding of the house, but would still be compatible and complementary. The new garage would be a single-car garage located at the rear of the lot, which would be consistent with the established character of the property and that of the greater neighborhood. The proposed work would not adversely affect any aspects of the building, which are considered character-defining features. In this case, there is no net change in the number of bedrooms, so they were not subject to water neutrality. And for those reasons, and the reasons outlined in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed modifications for 1545 Madrona and grant approval of a demolition permit, design review, and use permit. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Pursuant to our revised order of discussion, I will invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to discuss the project before we have questions for staff and before we open the public hearing. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to speak? Since there's no one to speak to the project, then we'll go right to questions for staff. Bobby?
Okay, just checking, the way I figured it out, my arithmetic, and it could be wrong, but I was just wondering. It looks like there is a net reduction of 250 square feet with the, I mean, you know, they're adding a certain amount, but they're getting rid of half of a garage. Is that accurate? Am I reading it right? I mean, which is, you know, positive thing.
That definitely could be possible, because it's, the detached garage is 672, the new one's going to be 240. Yeah, they are adding, I mean, I think it may be a net reduction.
So it seems like they, well, I don't know, you tell me.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense. There is a net reduction, because, yeah, they're only adding the 211 square feet.
Okay.
So yes, correct.
If you look at the first sheet in the plans, under development standards, coverage, you see the total. So the existing house, front porch, and existing garage total 1,774 square feet. The renovated residence with addition and new garage and the existing front porch total 1,546 square feet. So the reduction is there.
It's there, thank you.
Absolutely.
I didn't see that.
Are there any other questions for staff? John?
Just a couple. And it has to do with that side setback request. Page 76 of 213, the project description, da-da-da-da-da, it's the last paragraph in that sentence, in that section, says 6.4 feet.
Commissioner Pont, is your mic on?
Oh, no, sorry. Thank you. It seems to read that the setback is currently 6.4 feet someplace, which would be about six feet 5 inches, if it's 6.4 feet. But then they're asking for a setback of seven feet, and on the next page, it says the side back is six feet 4 inches.
Yeah, I think it should be six feet 4 inches.
Okay.
And that discrepancy is because the lot doesn't go, it kind of narrows.
It looked like it was kind of at an angle.
Yeah, and so that's why this slight discrepancy.
So they're keeping, they're keeping the wall even.
Yes.
It just so happens you get back a little further, it's seven feet, not six feet 4 inches.
Yeah.
Not 6.4 feet, but six feet 4 inches.
Yes, six feet 4 inches, yes. And it would all be on the same wall plane.
The other question I had, I know a pool is by right. Are they moving the pool, essentially?
I don't believe that they're moving it. I think that they're just filling it in.
Okay.
So they're, my understanding is that they're entirely getting rid of it.
So there'd be no pool on the lot?
No pool.
Okay.
From what I understand, yeah.
Okay. Has it sort of, wasn't too clear that they weren't going to put a pool in that area that now says that they're taking basically the garage out of?
Oh, that's not part of this application.
Okay.
Yeah, based on what they've presented.
It wouldn't have to be, it's by right, right?
I believe it is, yeah. Building is just mysterious.
That's correct.
Yeah, well, I, if they are putting in a pool, I would just appreciate it, seeing it on the plans, but you're saying they're not. Okay. It sort of implied that they were, the way it was written to me. Okay, that was it? Oh, but say, I like this project. It's keeping a small historical structure, a small historical structure, and they're actually removing a blemish from it, which is that garage, which doesn't match up with the rest of it at all. So I think this is the kind of project that I like to see, because it's keeping the historical structure, character of the town, it's keeping small, small, although a little larger, and yet not essentially tearing down the house and building a $2 million mansion on it. It's small, small, and I like this project a lot.
I echo those sentiments, although it is, I think, a little smaller than what was there. But I especially like that the pool won't be there, because that means there's going to be more permeable, you know, land there, and I think that's a really good thing, so I like it a lot, too.
I'll just note for the record that Sheet A 0.1 calls for removal of the pool and pool deck. I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't notice that, but I'm going to go with A 0.1.
I think this is a sort of a rare application in terms of size, so I'm certainly delighted we get to see one like this from time to time. I have nothing to add.
Move as written.
Okay, second.
Roll call, please.
Chair Hardy, will you clarify if you opened public hearing for this item?
Oh, excuse me. I didn't. I needed a reminder. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
Oh, maybe a neighbor. Turn this on. I'm Robert Rochetti. I own the property to the south of this lot, and there is some confusion on the diagrams regarding pools. One or two of the diagrams do have mention of a much smaller pool, maybe a third or a quarter the size of the existing pool on it, and other diagrams have no mention of a pool. So there is a little confusion about the pool. My questions really had to do with screening and, from my property on the south, and whether there's any, anything in the plan that addresses, that addresses the screening. Most of my windows on the north side of my property look into their bedrooms and bathroom, so screening is quite important to us. So anything, anything in the plans that would address screening between the buildings, even though there is a driveway between the properties, our dining room does look into their, into their bedroom. Right, that addresses screening at the back of, back of the property, the, basically their patio, but not between the houses. So I would like some mention of that or something, something in the drawings. And fencing, some of the, their existing fencing is falling into our property, so we're, we've been trying to get a hold of the owners, and the owners have been changing, apparently, so we're interested in what the plans are for fencing along between the houses. Couple other points, we are interested in whether this is a primary residence or a rental unit or a weekend, a weekend unit or what, how it intends to be used. Previous owner did tend to use it as a rental, fairly short-term rental, so that made it difficult to get a hold of the owner. Never knew how to get through to the owner. Let's see, other things. Tree removal, there, there is a tree that covers part of our, our property, that's on their property, an existing tree, and we, this doesn't, one part of the plan calls for removal of, of existing trees, or no removal of existing trees, and this plan does show removal of all the existing trees. So we're just curious which way it's going to go. So I think those are our main questions. Don't know if, if staff can address any of that, but we'd like, we'd like some information. Thank you.
Ms. Bianco?
Yeah. The applicant is now here, and he may be able, be better equipped to respond to some of those items, and I can follow up.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Thank you. Joe Farrell, architect, from Nevada. Sorry, I'm a little late, traffic's really bad. The landscape, the plan was to, there's a tree in the front yard that's kind of not in great shape. We were going to take that down and plant new tree in a new walkway up to the front door. The, I'm sure my client is very open to planting additional screening for you from, from your side, if, if you want, she's, she's open for that. There's a tree in the rear yard that is on your side that was, is proposed to be removed, and then everything else is new. So that, that is the plan, and the, we kind of went back and forth on a pool, and I think at this point, they decided not to do the pool. But they're a little unsure about whether they want to do it or not, but at this point, there's no plan on doing a pool. I think I addressed most of your, fencing, oh, I'm sure they would be open to replacing, repairing fencing, so it's finished nicely. Yeah, and I'm sure we can add that to some sort of conditions if, if needed. There, it is in bad shape in certain sections. It's, they, they've purchased it to fix and put on the market again, so it's not, it's, they don't know who the future buyer will be.
Any questions for the applicant's representative?
I do, I have a question. You said that one tree in the back you were planning to remove. Are you going to remove, because I think you said all the trees were on block. Did I either misunderstood, or is it just one tree in the back and one tree in the front that you're removing?
I believe there is one significant tree back there that is the one we are speaking of, and the rest are, are kind of more like big shrubs that are uncapped trees, but we would definitely be clearing that out and doing something much more aesthetic-looking, and we can also add supplemental plantings that help with screening.
Okay, so you're going to, you're going to replace the trees in both places?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant's representative? I have none. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second prompted by my failure to open the public hearing, but there you have it. I have to say at this point, I'm troubled by the inconsistency in the plan set. I've found the sheets that show the small pool, so I've got one sheet that tells me there's no pool... Well, it tells me that the existing pool's being removed, and it doesn't show a new pool, so the sheets for proposed... They're showing the proposed project are not consistent. I'm looking at A 0.1, and in front of the new garage, I've got a patio, and then if I keep going here, I'm going to get to... I see the same on L1, L2, L3, L4, and then I get to DR 1.0, which is Preliminary Grading Drainage and Utility Plan, and this sheet shows the existing pool as removed, and a And it appears I haven't tracked these sheets in terms of the presentation of trees and tree removal, but I'm hearing comments to the effect that it's not entirely clear or consistent there. So even though it may be that the pool is a matter of right, I nevertheless think, as a commission, we have some reason to expect consistent plan sets. It's hard to know what we're really dealing with without them. And then, you know, we've heard a neighbor bring up some concerns. I'll have some comments there. Fencing is... A falling-down fence is an issue for the neighbors, not for the commission. You're welcome to use this opportunity to inform the neighbor. That may have been useful, and I have no problem with that, but I don't think it's a subject for the commission to address. You've heard my comments on the pool. There's been some discussion between a neighbor and the applicant's representative regarding screening and the fence, as well as the use of the property. And again, here, I'll point out that it's really not for the commission. I don't frankly think it's even appropriate for the commission to demand of an applicant that they tell us who's going to live in the house or how they're going to use it, although again, I think it's fine for a concerned neighbor to raise the subject in the hope of getting a response from the applicant or property owner. We don't have the applicant present, only the architect, and if we take action tonight, we don't really know how well the neighbor's concerns are addressed. I would entertain a continuance myself, just not quite sure this one is action-ready. And having said that, it is also part of our new protocol, which I'm still learning, but attempting to master, to allow the applicant or the applicant's representative to speak after the public hearing is closed on questions of procedure. So if you have something you'd like to say about my suggestion for a continuance, this would be the time.
Yes, thank you. I also kind of share a responsibility such as yours. I'm a city of Novato Design Review Commissioner, and we have the same issue at our projects. And one thing that we've kind of decided is to allow staff and applicant to work with neighbors. We would be open to having a condition of approval to work with staff to provide additional landscape drawings as a condition of approval at the construction drawing level, and we could coordinate with the neighbor and so forth, so it works well with us in Novato.
This is an opportunity to address questions of procedure. I'm not sure that's a procedural point exactly, but if what you're saying is you'd prefer that we take action with a condition of approval rather than continue the matter, I'd like to hear that more directly.
Yes, if this is mostly an approvable project with the one outstanding issue of mainly the landscaping and fencing, I think that's... We'd be perfectly accepting of a condition of approval written into the approval that stipulates that we provide additional landscape plan and fencing details prior to issuance of permit that address these issues.
Thank you.
One thing, if you will, Mr. Chairman, there are two issues. There's the variability in your plan set currently as well.
And I think that mostly is an issue of the pool not showing up in all the drawings.
Correct.
Yeah, and that was unfortunately a missing communication with the civil engineer on the grading plan. His grading plan really is... It shows what is going on with the grading, and unfortunately, when we made the decision to remove the pool from the project, that didn't get picked up in his plans, but for right now, the intention is no pool. I think we probably were a little bit... We didn't show that as clearly enough, and it was probably something I should have caught. I think it probably was oversight due to the fact that Noah told me that pools were kind of by right, and we didn't think it was anything of a discretionary review issue with this board, so I think ideally, you know, we should have had it right, but I think we... At this point, we do not want to have a pool.
I have a question for the chair, or if it's not the right time.
Well, I think at this point, the comments having gone beyond what is strictly a matter of procedure, I will reopen the public hearing and offer members of the public another bite at the apple.
I'm fine with going with a stipulation that we addressed the screening issues between the properties, and the pool issue is not a major concern of mine, so that's more of a procedural issue for you and your staff. It's just that it seemed a little confusing that the pool disappeared and...
Agreed.
...appeared in a few of the other diagrams.
Agreed.
[laughing] Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. So I think now we're really and truly ready for the commission discussion. And we do have a motion on the floor.
Yes, which may be amended.
Which may be amended.
I would be certainly amenable to a friendly amendment that would address the screening, fencing issue on that side. I'm a little hinky about a condition of approval, but I can't see other way to get it, because a condition of approval for landscaping then sort of locks that landscaping in as part of the project, which is part of the property. So if we do indeed make it a condition of approval, then that landscaping is required to be there ad infinitum. So I'm a little weirded out about that, but if everybody else cares to go with that kind of approach.
Well, I would suggest that the condition might simply require the applicant to submit a landscaping plan that screens the property line with the common, you know, the common property line with the neighbor for review and approval administratively by staff, and I don't know that we wish to say more than that.
If we avoid saying this tree goes here and this tree goes there.
Yeah, no, I don't think we want to do that as a commission. I don't think we really can.
That wasn't audible, what you said. I didn't hear anything.
I said, as long as we don't get into the brush, so to speak, I'm happy with a broader condition.
Director House, do you have any comments on the proposed condition?
Staff is very comfortable implementing a direction from the Planning Commission to review a landscape plan that incorporates additional screening along the south property line, and we are happy to contact the neighbors to allow them to provide some more direct input as to what they would like to see. But I would agree with the concerns voiced by the commission regarding the specificity of the landscaping, and just keep it general in that it's intended to provide additional screening. The plan is intended to identify additional screening, and that would unlock in future changes by property owners once they buy the property and start to occupy it.
I will suggest, then, that I'll accept a friendly amendment to add that condition to the list of conditions for this project. I still like it, I still think it should move forward.
Bobby, do you have any comments on the proposed amendment?
It sounds fine to me. I'm comfortable with it. I have a question of you that's kind of related.
Oh, that's right.
If... I'm inferring from what you said about the applicant not being here, and it was only the architect, is what is there... We shouldn't act on suggestions without the applicant being here? Is there something about that, or do... I just am not clear about what you meant, or how to think of what you said.
Well, I'm trained to take what people say fairly literally, and I think what we heard was the architect's best sense of what the property owner was willing to do, and I just don't, myself, take that as a given then. Not that I mean to suggest anything irresponsible or misleading in the comments, simply that I've got no reason to believe that the architect's comments at the podium here binds the property owner.
So it's not a legal thing? I was just wondering if there's... It could only be binding if the owner were here?
It is a legal thing, but not in the way that you were thinking.
It'll be a requirement if we put the condition in.
Yeah, I hear you. I wanted to also say, just for information, that short-term rentals, you have to have a permit in this town. Long-term rentals, you don't, but just in response to what you said.
So is there...
There was a motion.
A motion to amend the motion?
Yeah, I think I can just take it as an amendment. I will amend my motion to include the requirement for discussions and presumably actions between the owner and the neighbor on screening that side.
And is there a second for the motion as... Oh, I see a comment coming from the director.
And inclusion of an amended landscape plan identifying additional screening to be provided with the building permit.
And a big X through the swimming pool.
Putting the fence in there? Did the fence get in there? Okay. I am happy to second that.
I hear an amended motion and a second for same. Ms. Gomero, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Potte?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. I believe that brings us to item 5.2. See if I can find that on my agenda. Sure enough. Item 5.2 is a request for a demolition permit and design review to demolish an existing single-family residence constructed circa 1941 and construct a new single-family residence at 1504 Stockton Street in the medium-density residential district and within the boundaries of the Adams Street Historic District. The new residence would be a two-bedroom home and designed in a modern farmhouse style with painted shiplap siding and capped with a standing seam metal roof. Covered parking would be provided by an attached carport. Ms. Bianco, is this yours? Would you please present the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Hardy. So as Chair Hardy said, the project before the commission tonight includes a request from applicant and property owner Karen McNeil to demolish an existing approximately 2,500 square-foot single-family residence, that is 18 feet in height, constructed about 1941, and to construct a new approximately 2,600 square-foot single-family residence that's approximately 23 feet in height. The subject property is a residential lot of about 9,200 square feet and improved with one-story, single-family residence. The property is located within the boundaries of the Adams Street Historic District, but based on a historic resource evaluation that was prepared for the property, the subject building does not appear to qualify as a historically significant resource itself. The proposed residence would be a two-bedroom home, designed in a modern farmhouse style with painted shiplap siding, capped with a standing seam metal roof, and then covered parking would be provided by an attached carport. Also, the existing picket fence that lines the property would be replaced by a wood and wire fence to match that of the neighbor on Stockton Street. In order to carry out the proposed project, the applicant has requested a demolition permit and design review. The proposed residence would feature quality materials and design which is generally consistent with residential styles exhibited throughout Santa Helena. The proportions and siding of the new construction is such that the proposed house would feature a primary first floor with a partial second floor to accommodate a small dormer bedroom with bath. The form is a simple rectangle with pitched roof on a single ridge and oriented so that the roof slips away from the neighbors on Stockton and across Pine. According to the applicant, this orientation would help to diminish the effect of the increase in height from 18 feet to 23 feet necessary to accommodate the second-floor dormer bedroom. As detailed in the staff report, the project would meet all development standards. The new residence would meet or exceed the minimum front street-side and rear setbacks of 20 feet and the 10-foot interior side setback consistent with the zoning code. It would also be within the allowed FAR, as the project would result in an FAR of .285, which is within the .318 allowable. That gives them about 300 square feet of wiggle room. The applicant has applied for a demo and design review permit, as I said. The project appears to meet the findings needed to approve a demolition permit in that the demolition of the existing house would not impact a historic resource, it would not eliminate important elements of the neighborhood, and would be contingent upon approval of a replacement structure. Likewise, staff found that the proposed design does, as the code requires, take reasonable account of those items enumerated under Code Section 17.164.030 and needed to approve design review. Staff did have some lengthy discussions with the applicant's team regarding the proposed design and its ability to meet all the required findings. Based on these discussions and the supplemental information provided by the applicant, which included scaled drawings and photos of the surrounding neighborhood, staff felt that the project as proposed does sufficiently meet the needed findings. The design uses mostly traditional building forms and materials. The design uses mostly traditional building forms and materials, neutral colors, and a level of simplicity such that it would not detract from surrounding character. And further, the retention of mature trees and landscaping would also help to screen and soften the new construction. While staff recognizes that the height and overall scale of the house will increase relative to what exists now, it seems that, given the proposed setbacks, the simplicity of the design, the robust level of landscaping, and the presence of other similarly scaled homes on the street and in the vicinity, would ensure that it would be able to blend into the streetscape and also be compatible with the neighborhood and exhibit appropriate transitions between it and the immediately adjacent properties. Finally, some questions came up about water neutrality. After reviewing plans and coordinating with the applicant team, the Public Works Department determined the project, by virtue of having no net increase in rooms and having to comply with Title 24 standards, which dictate the use of water-efficient fixtures, a water neutrality report was not warranted, given that the project as proposed would clearly be water-neutral. For the reasons discussed and detailed in the staff report, staff recommends that the planning commission approve a demolition permit and design review for the McNeil Residence Project. With that, I did want to add one condition, which would be to reiterate the code requirement that dense plantings, hedges, or walls within the site visibility triangle be limited to two feet in height.
And that's all I have.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah. Yeah, so staff does propose the addition of a condition that would reiterate the code requirement that states that dense plantings, hedges, and walls that are within the visibility triangle, so just that corner, you know, when people are turning, right, I guess, from Pine, that those not be higher than two feet in that area, just not obscure visibility.
Thank you.
So again, in keeping with our revised order of discussion, before calling for questions of staff from the commission and before opening the public hearing, I will invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to speak.
Thank you, Commissioners Pont, Monte, and Chair Hardy. My name, excuse me, my name is Karen McNeil. I am a resident of St. Helena and have been for 27 years. I'm a small business owner with a business on Main Street. My daughter has gone to St. Helena, excuse me, public schools and is currently in St. Helena High School. We've lived on Stockton and Pine Streets for 10 years now, and we know our neighbors well. With me tonight is my spouse, Michael Mills, and Polly Ogden, our builder, project manager and designer, whom some of you may know as she has done several projects in the neighborhood and in St. Helena. Our architect, Melvina Lampietti, is with her family on vacation, so she is not here tonight. Our proposed plan, which you have copies of before you, of course, is to replace a small concrete block house built during World War II with a more efficient farmhouse-inspired house with two bathrooms. Currently, we have one, and any of you who have teenage daughters know that one is not enough. We also plan to live there forever. My business is here and will always be. We, I think it's safe to say, we love our neighborhood. Our goal, sorry, nervous, I don't know. I can teach wine classes, but I guess I can't speak in front of the. But our goal has always been to, in a sense, honor the historic character of the neighborhood. The first thing we did with our architect and, of course, with Polly too, is to carefully walk the neighborhood and be sure that we stayed within and captured, really, our neighborhood's charm. We have spoken to and met with all of our immediate neighbors on all sides and on both sides of the street, met individually with them, as I said, showed them our plans, and gotten their blessing and approval. In addition, we've reached out to all of our neighbors a block away in every direction and invited them over to view the plans and received their support, the support of all who attended our meeting. One neighbor who we have not met, David Bowen, submitted a letter in support of our project, and I believe you have that letter. At this point, I'd like to turn this microphone over to Michael, who can answer some more specific questions about our plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Mills. I am now a resident of St. Helena. I have been for just a few months, although I have been coming to St. Helena and to the Napa Valley for 40 years regularly and frequently. So finally arriving here is, for me, a great pleasure. What I thought I would do is talk through a bit of the detail in the drawings. I think you have them all in front of you, and you also have the submission that we presented to the staff in answer to their questions. I'd call your attention first to the, and Zinnia has these drawings up, which will make it easy, to the rendering on screen. When we submitted the plans, or after we submitted the plans at the staff's suggestion, we met with our neighbors and arranged with them to make detailed measured drawings of their houses so that we could produce scaled drawings of our house in relation to theirs. We had the assistance of the neighbors in order to do that. So the view that you see here is the view from Stockton across the street. On the left is the neighbor's house, which is 17 feet high, and on the right is our house. As Lilly described it, as the staff described it, we have reversed the orientation of the ridge of the house so that it runs from Stockton away from Stockton. And the effect of that is that the roof is now sloping away from the neighbors, both on the Stockton Street side and across Pine Street, which reduces the overall mass of the house. In that exercise of creating measured drawings, if I could, if we could see drawing 2.0, this shows the house in relationship to its neighbors. At the top, you see the plan. Again, with the neighbor's cooperation, we measured their properties in order to create these drawings. And you'll see that their two lots to the north and to the east of us are somewhat larger and broader. The corner lot is very narrow and has a 20-foot setback on both sides. So the building envelope is the dotted line that you see in the lower-left quadrant. The elevations at the bottom of 2.0 and on the left-hand margin, you need to turn the page vertically in order to see it, show the profiles of the proposed house in relationship to the two properties on either side, and also show an indication, kind of by ghosting in, of the vegetation that exists. And subject to the visibility zone on the corner, visibility triangle on the corner will be maintained. In the written submission, and if I could call your attention to pages six and seven, we've enumerated the elements that the architect and we undertook in order to fit within the neighborhood. At the same time, we needed to create additional floor space, and we've done that. We've increased the floor space by about 33 percent, but we've increased the covered area of the lot by only 12 percent, which is a significant gain in setback. And we have removed non-conforming intrusions, substantial non-conforming intrusions on both sides of the house. We've also restricted the length of the house. We've pulled it back somewhat from the neighbor on Pine Street in order to increase the space between our house and hers. We have made the second floor not a full second floor. And later in the written submission, we've shown photographs of a number of houses in the neighborhood that do have full second floors. That's quite common, both in older and newer houses. We wanted to minimize that, so the second floor consists of an attic storage space and a dormer. The dormer bedroom for the teenager has actually a sloped ceiling. It's not quite a full-height ceiling in order to, again, reduce the bulk. The reorienting of the ridgeline, turning the house so that it's running parallel to Stockton Street rather than across, also has the effect of reducing the bulk. In the floor plan in 1.1, you can see that the whole center of the house is carved out as a courtyard. It's roughly a third of the length. And as the result, there's no wall on that side until you get 15 feet further back into the house. And for the neighbor across Pine Street, that moves the perceived placement of the house back another 15 feet. And in addition, as you can see on the drawing, which does not account for the visibility zones, I'm sorry to say, I wasn't aware of a visibility triangle until the staff told me about it the other day, there is existing hedging at the corner, and we'll accommodate that. But we do intend to keep all of the existing vegetation, which substantially surrounds the property. We'll improve some of the planting, which is a little ragged in spots, except for that zone on the corner. As I mentioned, or as Karen mentioned, rather, we have met with all of our neighbors all the way down Pine Street and a block either way on Stockton. The four immediate neighbors, the two adjacent and the two across, have authorized us to say that they do support the project. They were not able to submit letters in time, but we have their names, and they've authorized us to say that they do support it. We did have a meeting, an open meeting with those who had received the yellow card from the commission, and a number of neighbors did attend and told us they supported as well. In the written submission, at pages 16, 17, 18, and 19, you can see examples of houses in the neighborhood that we accounted for in the planning. These are full-height second stories that are quite comfortable in the neighborhood, but we wanted to minimize that, so we've tapered it back to less than a full-second story. On page 20 and 21, for example, is a very recently completed house on Allen Street, which has a full-height second story running the full width of the property, and we decided to step back from that. At pages 22 to 29 or so of the submission, we've shown examples of other houses that, as we were walking around the neighborhood with our architect, we were mindful of, some recently-built houses, not all of them, that confronted the neighbors in a way that we wanted to avoid. Garages at the street, for example, or on page 28, and you can see an example of a house that has a very large presence on the street. And we tried to pull back from that, not only in the ways that I've described, but also by making a single form. If you look at page 29, you'll see an example of a house form that's very common around here, an older house, I don't know the exact date, in which the house is a single form, rather than, as its neighbor on the left-hand page, 28, has put together a series of pieces. We tried to keep it as a single piece, which is less obtrusive in the neighborhood. We do, as the written submission summarizes at page three, we do meet all of the statistical requirements. I'd be happy to answer any questions when it's appropriate.
Well, this is the appropriate time for the commission to ask questions of the applicant. Bobby? Well, yes, we can do both at the same time, but hopefully not back and forth.
Okay. I just had, it's a detail, but I was curious. When the project was being read, I think the height was quoted as 23 feet. And on page 170, it says 23.5 feet. On page 171, it says, under staff analysis, 23.5. And then on page 188, it has 24 feet in the table. I was just curious which it was.
I believe it's 23 and a half feet.
23 and a half? Oh, so the table is...
Yeah, and when I was speaking, I was just approximating, but yes, 23 and a half.
Okay. I'll change the table then. Thank you.
Commissioner Pont?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. First, I want to ask Eric about the vision triangle. Doesn't that also have a height limit the other way? Isn't it from like two feet to six feet? It needs to be clear. You can have a tree that grows down so far, but I think it's six feet.
That is correct. There is a window allowed, so you can have a tree and you can have shrubs, but they're asking.
Right, right. So I just want to make sure if there's a restriction that goes in there. It's two to six feet. Needs to be clear. This is for the applicant, I think. On page A 1.2, where you show your attic with a max seven-foot ceiling height, do you have an average?
The average is three and a half. If you, that seven-foot ceiling is not at the ridgeline, it's below the ridgeline. There is a space above the ceiling for ductwork, but the height of the attic itself is seven feet, which then slopes down to zero.
I'm asking because our code actually defines what an attic is. No higher than seven feet, and an average of less than four.
And our average is three and a half.
Good. Thank you. A question on A 1.1. And I think this is for staff, not for you, sir. The office has a closet in it. That makes it a bedroom under the building code, correct?
I don't think the, an office or a closet or no closet defines a bedroom. It's the 70 square feet or larger and the dimension greater than seven feet in one direction.
And if I may, Commissioner, the closet is actually in the front hall, not in the...
Ah, it opens the other way. Okay. Okay. Also, I'm curious about the water thing, because before, we had buildings that had to be analyzed as if some of these rooms could become bedrooms. Now we're eliminating that. How does that happen?
When I looked at this floor space, I would define the office as a bedroom, because it says it clearly in our analysis, our water demand analysis white paper that's available online to applicants. It was devised in '13 by a previous director to guide developers and homeowners to establish water neutrality that was set by the Safe Field Policy that council approved in 2011. With that given, we got to look at bedrooms. Can it be a bedroom? The office, I think it would be, but if it was a three-bedroom before, we're still at water net neutral with the three-bedroom, counting the office as a bedroom. The library has an open span, no doorway, of six feet. I would not classify as a bedroom.
Okay. Okay, so it was because it already had three? And it retains it three?
Existing structure is a three-bedroom home. According to plan.
Yes.
And we've, since the...
I thought you read it as two, but that's okay.
The, there is a third bedroom, which we don't use as a bedroom, so that was the source of the confusion. On the 1941 plans drawn by the doctor who built the house for himself and lived in it for all of six months before the war took him away to another location, he showed that as a bedroom. We have not used it as a bedroom.
Okay.
So we're three, if the office counts as the director says, then we're three bedrooms today and three bedrooms tomorrow.
And you understand my confusion, because the staff report actually said two for two.
Right.
Now we're talking about three for three. It's the difference between what's written and what I'm hearing now.
And our submission said three for two, so...
The staff report said three for two.
Well, if this were baseball, three for two would be impossible, and three for three would be better than two for two.
Right.
But I digress. But I digress.
I don't think the A's of the Giants are going to go anywhere this year, but that's okay.
I have one question, and if staff can answer, fine. If not, hopefully the applicant can. Could someone tell me the difference in height between the existing structure and the new? I'm looking for delta H here.
I believe—the existing building height is 18 feet, and it's going to 23 feet 5 inches.
23 and 1/2. From 18 to 23 and 1/2, so we've got 5 and 1/2 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
If I may, Commissioner Hardy, that—the ridgeline is 18, the chimney is 21 on the current house. We did not include that. So the ridgeline is at 18.
Yeah, and that's what I was interested in.
The new ridgeline is 23.5. There is no chimney in the new house, because there is no fireplace.
Are there any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Okay, seeing none, thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'm not getting much fun out of the public hearing thing here.
We'll get you a bigger gap.
That's a good thing. That's a good thing. Don't get me wrong. I have to be careful what I ask for.
Yeah. How can I help?
So, I think we're ready for commission discussion. Commissioner Pont.
I'm less happy with this project than the previous one. We've got a historic structure that we're taking out root and branch, and putting in something that is—by my eyes, significantly bulkier. Particularly on that east side, where we've got, what, 87 feet of unreleaved wall? That's a lot. And parts of it—the dormer—are very tall, 87 feet tall. I understand there are restrictions to the lot. It's a corner lot. There are many, many, many corner lots in town. In fact, there's a subdivision, I think, where every 2nd or 3rd house is a corner lot. And the applicant's submittal of projects that may or may not be similar wasn't helpful, to me at least, because I saw some project in there that probably never should have been built. The house on Hillview Place is a good example of that. The neighbor has a 25-foot wall right next to his driveway, so I don't know if that's helpful to where you're trying to go. So, bottom line, in terms of its design, I'm not thrilled. And I'll leave it there for now. Staff did answer my questions on the water neutrality news, but I'm a little alarmed to see the written report saying 2 for 2, and then hearing it's 3 for 3. But I'll leave that one where it lies.
Same ratio. Same ratio.
Commissioner Monette.
Well, I am on the other side of this one, from Commissioner Ponte. I think that the pictures were showing what is there, not what should be there. And I walk that neighborhood a lot, and, you know, we're being asked, does it fit in with what is there? So, you know, I really feel—I also feel that the applicants have taken a lot of care into being sensitive to the massing, given that it's—you know, most of the houses around there, lots of them, are massive. I understand what you're saying there, but that's what's there. And been very considerate. Most importantly, no neighbors are complaining, and they've all been notified. And I think, again, that is—I really appreciate that process. Thank you, Planning Department. And so I think it's—it's not an historical house either, from my understanding, so it hasn't been an historical house that's been uprooted. So I think it's—I think—I like it. I mean, I support it. I support the community attitude that the applicants have had, including everyone, and, you know, really changing their design to accommodate the people that live around them. So, given that, and the way it does fit in with whether what should be there or not, it does fit in with what is there, I support this project, and really thanks the applicants for the care they've taken in designing it.
I'm not sure if I'm in the middle exactly, but here goes. I was truly impressed by the work that went into the applicant's presentation. There's a lot of information there, and I certainly found it helpful, although there were points where, like Commissioner Pont, I wasn't sure it was necessarily helpful to the applicant in terms of the comparisons with other 2-story homes. My own sense of the question of compatibility of a larger home or a taller home with its neighborhood is that, you know, the immediate surroundings are what matter most. Certainly, that's what seems to be true in terms of the comments we receive from Project Neighbors. So while I found the photos of 2-story homes a block or more away to be informative and truly helpful in terms of sort of the larger landscape of the neighborhood, I'm not sure that they really necessarily support a finding that this structure and its location is compatible with its immediate neighbors. I was more concerned with what's right around it. In that regard, I think the response of the neighbors themselves is the one that's most important, because the—for my perspective, the question of the issues, perhaps I should say, that arise out of the introduction of a newer, larger structure are, you know, issues of change. Once it's been there, once you have some history with the large and the small, or the larger and the smaller side by side, they become just part of the accepted landscape. But the introduction of a newer, larger, taller home can be very disruptive, and generally speaking, when that's how the neighbors feel, they let us know. So here, I have to say, I'm very appreciative of the time and effort that the applicants made in reaching out to the neighbors and bringing us a project which has support. And to me, that, again, is an important consideration in considering the compatibility of the project. From a design perspective, I think it's fine, but for us, I think the issues are more than design in the abstract, if you will. The neighbor response is certainly relevant. On the historical side, I just have to say, I find the legal standard that makes any structure 50 years or older, at least in terms of age, eligible for listing as an historical structure. I find that reflects what I would have to call a very impoverished sense of what history means. But, you know, that's—I guess that's just a personal problem. On the subject of the hedges, you know, the existing screening is certainly impressive and effective as one walks around the house, which I did this afternoon. And I think it's important that it be retained in terms of how this new structure is incorporated to the experience of living in the neighborhood. But I couldn't help but notice that in some areas, the existing growth encroaches onto the sidewalk significant distance. This is another sort of personal item, but one that has some place in our regulations. And I'm informed by staff that there is an ongoing effort to notify property owners whose landscaping encroaches in the public right-of-way, and somewhat similar to the driver's view triangle. There's both minimum clearance for things that grow over the sidewalk, and I don't know what is allowable in terms of the horizontal encroachment, but I would encourage the applicant to keep things maintained with some respect for the public right-of-way. I have no objections. I'm fine with it, with all that said.
Can I ask a question of the applicant? I think I misunderstood something, or maybe you could remember. I heard when you were speaking that—
Well, let me answer your question. If you wish, I can reopen the public hearing. I am going to adhere to the premise of our procedural guidelines, which is that once a public hearing is closed, we will always provide the applicant with an opportunity to speak on matters of procedure. I think that's important for the reasons we discussed when the matter was first brought to our attention by Director House. But in terms of further discussion of the project that requires reopening the public hearing—which at your request, I will do—the public hearing is open. Would the applicant like to come to the podium to answer the question we will soon hear?
Thank you. Well, I remember, possibly erroneously, that when you were describing it, that you described the house next to your house as being taller than your house. Did I mishear you? Because it didn't look like it in the pictures, but you couldn't see the whole house.
You did mishear me. If—in drawing A 2 0 shows the exact relationships, the houses on either side, on Stockton and on Pine Street, are shorter than—actually, they're slightly shorter than the ridgeline of our proposed house.
Okay. Thank you.
One has a chimney, the other does not. Are there other questions?
Are there other questions? I think not. Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak while the public hearing is open? Seeing none? It's closed. Back to the commission.
I would like to comment further on your description of sidewalk incursion. And I would just say, welcome to St. Helena. I walk a lot, and I can say that—I walk in the rain, and that between the telephone poles and the lush growth in front of houses, you cannot—you have to walk in the street if you have an umbrella. It's really difficult to get down a sidewalk with an umbrella when it's raining.
No, I know. I'm not sure I can match you for miles walked, but I walk a lot, and there are many places in my typical circuits where I'm either ducking, getting poked by branches, or forced to step into the street. And for me, it ends up being a sort of pedestrian hostile sidewalk, and that just—it doesn't sit well with me.
I agree.
So I will continue to check in with staff from time to time on the enforcement process, because I think it's important for us to have a pedestrian-friendly community.
Well, the general plan is—it really stresses that, too. You know, it should be a pedestrian-friendly place.
Yeah, and I'll take some credit for that, actually. I advocated for that repeatedly when the current general plan was in process. So, is there a motion? Or would the commission like further discussion?
I'm ready to move on.
I'm listening.
I make a motion that we accept staff recommendations on this project.
Might there be a second? There is for me, then. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
I believe we're done with this. So, let's see what's left in the agenda. Is this just another continuance?
It is another continuance, and I just would like to inform the commission, staff is endeavoring to capture some of the direction provided at the hearing regarding the design issues with Verizon Cell Tower, and we do have a tolling agreement in place, which is allowing those discussions to be ongoing. The reason for the notification and the inclusion of the item on the agenda is that there is state legislation that grants automatic approvals if Cell Tower projects are not approved within a shot clock timeframe, and this project would have been within that shot clock had we not received the tolling agreement, which came in after the item was noticed. So this item will be re-noticed once we have a design that the applicants are wishing to be brought forward in order for it to be reviewed at a public hearing.
So it is not being continued to a date certain, then?
Correct.
Okay. Very good.
So to continue your analogy, you've essentially called a timeout?
That's exactly what we did.
So is there—so if it's not—is this a shot clock thing for a by right? Is that going to trip in if we wait too long?
Staff will schedule—staff will not allow that to occur. So we had not received the tolling agreement, and we had planned on scheduling the item for a denial based on the lack of provision of a tolling agreement and some of the lack of responsiveness to the design concerns. The applicants, upon hearing that, provided the tolling agreement, and I believe it's told until September. So we will—the intention is to get this to the commission, obviously prior to that tolling agreement expiring, or we'll be coming forward with a recommendation for denial if staff is not going to allow a by right approval due to a shot clock violation.
Thank you.
So the matter having been continued to this date and noticed for this date, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak?
I didn't know all that. I loved getting my little yellow card telling me that I could come and comment tonight, so I appreciate the opportunity to comment. I am—my name is Kathy Bennett Warner. I live at 1434 Grayson. I see that you have—I'm assuming that when you're talking about the design direction of this, that it may be in response to this written notice?
The Planning Commission reviewed this item previously, which you—I'm sure you received a notice for if you received this. At that time, the applicants requested the item be continued, and the commission in that review provided some concerns over the design proposed.
Oh, so the commission—okay, okay, all right. Well, I just wanted to make comment, because I see that this was submitted, and I didn't submit any written comment, but I definitely wanted to come and talk to you here. So I feel very strongly—I have no relationship to Verizon or AT&amp;T, but I— So I feel very strongly, I have no relationship to Verizon or AT&amp;T, but I think that these dead cell zones, and obviously this tower is like right behind my house. And I, when I saw the notice that PG&E was willing to allow, you didn't have to build another tower, that you, you know, you, I mean, there's only about four houses that are impacted by this, and mine is one of those. And to have the cell service and to not have the dead zone, to me, is so important. I think that the planning commission, that the city council, that the citizens of this community, especially after living through the fires and seeing what we went through with the lack of being able to communicate, we're in an era where we cannot afford to do that anymore. It's just almost irresponsible. So the NICSLE, you know, alerts that tell us when things are happening are so critical, and to not have that, to have as many dead zones in this town as we have, I think, and you don't always, the utilities, the Verizons and the AT&amp;T of the worlds can walk away from these projects. And so the fact that they're willing to put it there, that PG&E is willing to not, you know, put up another tower, I just wanted to speak in support of it. And when I got here, I saw that one of my fellow neighbors was, you know, was talking about the design piece of this, and I didn't know about the commission looking at the design. But I just want to say, as a commission, I really hope that there, I don't know if there's a cell plan, tower plan, or a cell service plan that the city has, but I would very much like to be engaged in however we can be helpful on that. So thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you for your comments. I would urge you to return when this item returns on our agenda. It is, for better or worse, generally the case that the people we hear from most recently have a bigger voice in the outcome than those who spoke in the past. That's just a friendly suggestion. You're welcome. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I think that takes care of that agenda item.
Can we ask a question about it?
Certainly, we can have discussion with staff, absolutely.
I have a question for you.
Please.
Is what's on the docket right now my way or the highway kind of thing, like from the people who want to put up the tower? Are they saying, we want it here, or we're not going to have it at all in St. Helena? Is that...
They have not said that, and we've actually had a lot of discussions with them. They had concerns over some of the conditions of approval that were proposed. They had concerns over the process. They had concerns over some of the, St. Helena, as you well, or you're well aware, we don't have design guidelines or any specific direction as to how cellular infrastructure should be designed, and so that lack of direction was concerning to them. But we have continued to work with them in an effort to try to get both an aesthetically pleasing design, but also one that would allow expansion of the cellular service and infrastructure in St. Helena in response to some of the concerns from the members of the public. So it is not in a situation where they have indicated they are willing to make no additional changes, but we're continuing to negotiate.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission on this item?
Just a short one. My recollection of the discussion we had when this came up the first time, if I can typify the reaction of the entire group, wasn't so much in terms of the coverage provided by the project. It was in terms of the look of the project.
Yeah, that's what I recall, too. I was just hearing from the comment that there was a sense, if we don't do this, we won't have, there will still be, you know, I mean, there was a fear, I heard.
But I will add to remind everybody that during the fires, Verizon was the only cell service that worked. The others did not.
Whatever. You get my gist.
Then I think that concludes our discussion of 5.3, as I have nothing to add at this time. We have no scheduled matters. Are there any staff reports or updates for the commission?
Thank you, Chair Hardy, yes. Just briefly, just to remind everyone that the meeting of August 7th has been canceled by vote of the commission at the last meeting. We are transitioning to the 10-day publication period that the city council has transitioned to. So applications will be published, the agenda will be published 10 days before the meeting date. So the commission will have additional information, or additional time with the information. The public will have additional time to review that information. Staff is not proposing, similar to the council, to mandate that timeline. However, we will be endeavoring to meet it on every item, on every agenda, similar to the council, providing the last-minute flexibility, or the flexibility to continue to add up to three days, as currently is required per the adopted legislation, give some flexibility to respond to issues as they come, or to place last-minute items on an agenda should there be a need to. However, we will always endeavor to publish all items 10 days ahead of time to provide both the commission and the public additional timeframes to review the information. So the commission graciously agreed with staff to cancel the August 7th meeting to allow, to ease that transition, so that is occurring. And then staff would just like to remind the commission and the public that we are intending to hold a joint planning commission, city council meeting on August 14th to review proposed changes to the general plan from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM here in this room. These changes are primarily, they're recommended by the consultant, they're primarily some language cleanup and some responses to changes in the state law, and then also just some kind of organizational changes to the general plan draft to improve its functionality and its ability to be implemented after adoption. But so that is a big meeting that we are, just staff wanted to bring that to the attention of the commission and the public. And that is the only two items for the department report.
Thank you, Director House. The agenda forecast is online. I don't know if there are any questions about the agenda forecast from other commissioners. I have none. So you've already heard that our next regular meeting is on the 21st, that we have a joint meeting. Is that tentative still? Did I hear some tentativeness there?
We had not sent out an email confirming that to both the commission and the council. However, at this point, there's no reason to doubt that it cannot happen. There is...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. That was a double negative. You've gone Trumpian on me.
I apologize for that, sir. My issue is I am out all next week, which is when the item is due 10 days ahead of time, and so it will happen. But we have not formally notified the commission or the council of that. The applicants are, I'm sorry, the consultants are working hard to get all the documents and information into a format that we can present it. I see no reason why it should not occur, and we will formalize that by Friday of this week.
Excellent. I'm going to block it out in my calendar and cross my fingers.
Which way? Which direction?
Oh, I think the sooner we can get to that, the better, honestly. So meetings adjourned.